Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Adam. We are to that point this evening where we give an invitation for public comment. Any interested audience member is invited to provide comments. You may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. We will limit comments to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. We have public comment cards that have been turned in. If you'd like to speak, please fill one of those up and get it up to Melissa. Speakers cannot yield time to others. In order to encourage an environment of openness, courtesy, and respect for differing points of view, please refrain from behavior that is disruptive to the meeting such as making loud noises, clapping, shouting, booing, or any other activity that disrupts the orderly conduct of the meeting. Abusive language will not be tolerated. So, we have a number of individuals that have filled out comment cards this evening. And so the first I have is Laurel Lindberg.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Laura Lindberg and I'm an administrator at Parkland Village. We're an assisted living community here in McMinnville. We currently provide care for 50 residents, many of whom are dealing with multiple and chronic health conditions. I'm here tonight to voice my opposition to your previous passed ordinance 5059 and support for measure 36202, which would overturn the ordinance. I'm also here to ask you not to refer a competing ballot measure, which only serves to further confuse residents, staffs, family, and voters. As someone who's lived in the community for decades, I believe very strongly that the voters need to have a say in this critical issue. A competing measure serves no purpose but to confuse the issue at hand. Let me also add that the ordinance itself has created an abundance of confusion for my staff, my residents, and their families. I've had numerous conversations with concerned family members who are nervous that their loved ones are put in jeopardy by the 911 fines. We are constantly reassuring families that we will call 911 when we feel it is necessary, and that the fine will not dissuade us from providing the highest quality care that we can. I've had to reassure staff that our policies and procedures will not change. Resident health and well-being is our highest calling. Finally, you've also confused the issue for your first responders, as many of them are not aware that they are the highest-ranking city official on site, who must now determine a call, whether it was justified or deserves a fine. This creates a strange and uncomfortable dynamic in a situation where the entire focus should be on the health and safety of the residents we serve. Thank you.
I have a question for the guest. Now, that's unusual. Have you actually had any fines at Parkland?
I have not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Beth Jones.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you for allowing me to be here. I'm the administrator at Furcrest Senior Living in McMinnville, which is a memory care and assisted living facility. And I'm here on behalf of the residents and have a letter that after I read it, I'd like to submit as a matter of the record. Mayor Hill and members of the council, we, the undersigned residents of Furcrest Assisted Living in McMinnville, write to you tonight to express our opposition to your previously passed ordinance 5059 and support for measure 36202 as it heads to the voters. We also ask that you not place a competing measure on the November ballot, which would undoubtedly lead to confusion and seems unnecessary. We're very disappointed by the lack of engagement from city council with the senior community over these issues. There was no broad outreach to senior residents like ourselves, senior citizen advocates, or the organizations in which we live. Seniors, as I'm sure you're all aware, are an extremely active segment of the electorate. We show up and we want to be involved on issues that affect us. Your ordinance discriminates based on where we live and imposes taxes only on those in care communities, but not to those who are able to still reside in their own homes. We should not be punished. Many seniors who live in our care communities and others in McMinnville are on fixed incomes, and the ordinance's additional costs will inevitably lead to an increase in the cost of care. There are better solutions to a city's financial challenge than to balance your budget on the backs of seniors and those who provide care. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And about 50% of our residents in the assisted living.
You give that to Melissa and she'll take that. Thank you, Beth. Gwen Dayton.
Thank you, Mayor Hill. Councilors, it's good to be back. My name is Gwen Dayton. I'm general counsel with the Oregon Healthcare Association, and I am pleased to come before you again today. First, I want to express our appreciation for the conversation that you recently had about outreach to us and working on this measure to make the ordinance to make it more productive. I will say that we've reached out to you multiple times to try to engage and did not receive a response. We would have preferred to have done this before.
I'm sorry, I just have to say, I, at the last meeting, did ask for you guys to reach out to me. I never heard a thing. So, when you say that, I just want to make sure that you're being accurate.
Absolutely, council. I will tell you, we sent a letter to the city in December, I think it was December 5th, that was sent to the fire chief, and you all were copied, indicating we had a number of questions about the ordinance. We received no response to that. We also sent out another letter. I should have the date with me, but I don't, but it was in the spring. We sent it certified mail, indicating we'd love to sit down and talk with you all about this. We received no response. I'm sorry that nobody came by after our last meeting, which was just a couple of weeks ago, but we certainly have reached out to all of you. But that's not the point of my testimony. The point of my testimony is that we are glad to start again, we are glad to engage with you on the issues that underlie this ordinance, and we want to express our appreciation for that opportunity going forward, as opposed to looking back. In particular, we appreciate the effort to consider some sort of a stair-step EMS ordinance, sort of like Portland, right? Last time I was here, I talked about how OHCA worked closely with Portland on their ordinance before it passed, to make sure that the processes and their criteria and the amounts and the reflected, appropriately, the safety needs of residents against the needs of the city, right? And we were glad for that opportunity. We would look forward to working on those sorts of issues with you on the EMS criteria as well. So, we want to thank you for that opportunity, and I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Gwen. Next, Fee Stubberfield. Fee?
Welcome, sir. Good to see you. Mayor. Fee Stubberfield, 401 Northeast Evans, McMinnville, Oregon. And it's good to be here. I wanted to talk at the last meeting, but the hour was late and I didn't want to come up here when we all weren't at our best and thought that there might be a better time that I could make myself available on this issue. Sincerely appreciate certainly Adam's engagement on this issue, and appreciate the tone, Mayor, of revising and looking at the escalating the fees and maybe working with industry. I can assure all of you, this is what I do for a living. I got into this because of the same reason that you, the very good reasons and purpose that you're approaching this ordinance, which is very genuine to affect quality care among seniors and make it better. That's why I do what I do. And so, I can assure you that there are many issues here below the surface that can make this better, and that in a cooperative way, not only the communities here in McMinnville taking care of residents, and the people that work in them, the people that live in them, but the local and state governments, we could really have a big effect working cooperatively on this. And I think the Oregon Healthcare Association, I'm here representing myself, the Oregon Healthcare Association has the data, they have the skills, they have the knowledge, and are more than willing to help in crafting a very effective solution. And I would like to ask you to consider, as you craft your message regarding this major, to think about a couple of things. The impact of the fines and the graduated fines can have a very good effect on some providers, right? Providers that may be challenged, providers that need to focus on this. There can be some very good outcomes, very positive. But I think one of the things that is troubling about the ordinance 5059 is really the, and for Mr. Towery's benefit, I'll call it the licensing fee, licensing fee, and the competing major calls it a tax, which we believe it is a tax. The struggle that that does and the amount of money that that gives for already doing inspections that are supposed to happen from people that are paying taxes, where the real issue is here, and the resources that it takes away from communities and their budgets and the administrations, particularly the Medicaid communities, the lowest-cost residents, the lowest-cost communities that are struggling, and the fee is about half of what they get in reimbursement a month. But now you add on the licensing fee, which can be a significant amount of their budget, and I just would ask you to really consider, is this licensing fee, first of all, the concept, but then even drawing it down to even the $100 level, is it really, really having the impact? So, with that, thank you.
Thank you, Fee. Any questions? Future comments?
Great, thanks.
Well, this takes us to our first, our only presentation this evening, and that's a presentation on the Three Mile Lane Plan Update. And we'll call on Planning Director Heather Richards to run us through this presentation. Heather, welcome.
I wanted to bring to you an update on our current work that's underway at Three Mile Lane. It is an area planning work. It is work that's funded through a grant from the ODOT Oregon Department of Transportation and the Department of Land Conservation and Development. It's about a $250,000 project, and we're about halfway through it. So, we thought it was a good time to come and update you with what we're doing there. I think this is a great picture. I like to show this because it represents old and new in the area, and it's very representative of McMinnville. So, if you look at the Jackson Wine Distribution Center that was built just behind that old farm cellar there, they tried to design their roofline in such a way to represent the old farm cellar, to really put homage to the agricultural traditions here in McMinnville. And so, it's showing that juxtaposition, and that's something we want to continue to do as we work in this area and combine old and new, and really sort of show distinctiveness for McMinnville as people travel through on Highway 18. We do have a website set up for this project. It's www.threemilelane.com. That's where we're posting all of our documents and any progress on the project if people are interested in following along. So, the area plan itself is really a high-level plan, high-level master plan for this area for Three Mile Lane, which is essentially Highway 18 as it travels through McMinnville from the eastern side to Three Mile Lane. It's bounded, it has a lot of development on the northern side. The southern side of the highway, though, has a lot of vacant land, which is interesting for McMinnville when we have lands constraints and are struggling with finding land for development opportunities. There's a lot of vacant land south of Highway 18. So, we asked ourselves a couple of years ago, why is that? Why hasn't this land developed? That was the first question. The second question was, how can this area with so much land ready for development serve this community in the next 20 to 40 years? How can it sort of set the foundation for the future of this community? And is there something that we should be doing in terms of master planning to ensure that it's moving in the direction we want it to move as a community? This shows, this is an area that shows development. The other interesting aspect of this particular area of McMinnville is that the properties that are vacant are large contiguous properties. So, the ownership, you don't have, ownership isn't disparate. There's opportunities for someone to come in and really make significant impact here. And then it's also adjacent to the city-owned airport, which also has a lot of opportunity land associated with it. There are four goals for this project. The first and primary goal is economic vitality for McMinnville. There's also a goal of ensuring that there's a mixture of land uses in this area that is diverse and vibrant and really represents McMinnville well. The third goal is to enhance multimodal connections. So, what that means is really looking at all different ways of creating connectivity for people from and to this district for both vehicles, for pedestrians, for bicycle and transit. And then, goal four is to create an aesthetically pleasing gateway to the city of McMinnville. So, more people travel and see McMinnville on Highway 18 than any other corridor for our community. So, this is a great opportunity to really make an impression of what McMinnville is for the people traveling through. We're building on existing plans, so there's been a lot of study in this area, and we want to make sure we're bringing that forward. So, we are building on existing plans and also current efforts underway. We're about halfway through the project. So, this is an 18-month project. We expect to have it concluded by May 2020. What we expect to see at the end of this project is an area plan that would come to you for acknowledgement, and that area plan should show suggested land uses, potential rezoning, any sort of development code that we want to enact to ensure that the vision for this area moves forward as the community would like to see happen. There's a lot of documents that have already been generated for this project, and so those are on our website. If you're interested in them, I'm just going to give you a snapshot of some of that in this presentation. The first thing we did is we looked at existing conditions in terms of land use and zoning in the area. This is the comprehensive plan, so it shows the different types of land uses that we have out there. Just to give you an example, all the different colors are representing different land uses. So, there are a lot of different distinctive land uses happening in this area. It also has several major property owners, as I suggested. So, there's an opportunity to bring the property owners together and talk about what makes the best sense for development moving forward, so that we can ensure that it's all leveraging against each other and enhancing each other. We identified different areas in terms of subareas. So, there's activities taking place just, for instance, north of Highway 18 where the Space and Aviation Museum is and a planned hotel in the water park. That's really becoming a tourism activity center, especially with the RV park next door. And then, south of there, there's the airport, and then there's the large industrial lands. And then, just towards the west side, we start to see residential development occurring on the north side of Highway 18. And then, on the south side, we have some medical development. So, there's a lot of different activities taking place in the area. This is representative of what that looks like in terms of the different landscapes that are happening there as well. It's actually a very interesting area geographically. It has some of the best views of mountains, McMinnville mountain view sheds that we have here in all surrounding McMinnville. And then, this shows the different types of neighborhoods we have there. So, we have some high-density neighborhoods that are occurring with the Habitat for Humanity neighborhood and with community home builders. We have some, we also have some existing large lot neighborhoods that came in from the county when we went through an annexation process. We have Shemetica College over there, and then we have some new multifamily that's being developed as well. There's a lot of opportunities with the land to do things, to start thinking about how these different uses play with each other and what are some of the refinements in terms of amenities that we need to bring to bear to put all these puzzle pieces together. Joe Dancer is just a, Joe Dancer Park is just adjacent to this area, so there's opportunities to look at how to interact with that, how to create better neighborhoods that are happening there, and bring these different subdivisions that are being built into a sort of comprehensive neighborhood that interacts with each other. And then, there's a lot of natural features there as well. The Yamhill River bounds this area on both the north and south side. We also have the Gaylord McBees Airport Park in this area, which is a unique park for this community, and beautiful view sheds to the south over agricultural land. In terms of transportation, it's really an area that serves the vehicle. We've been doing, this is partially funded by ODOT, so there is a lot of transportation study in this area planning process. And so, looking at counts of how people are moving around in the area, it's clear that it's very vehicular-dominated. So, we don't have a lot of pedestrian and bicycle activity occurring there. It's mostly vehicles and not as much freight. I was actually surprised at the freight counts that were on Highway 18. We looked then at the pedestrian system to understand what the system looks like and where there might be some vulnerabilities. Green is good in this network and red is stressed. And so, you see that there's a lot of stressed network for pedestrians in the area. It's mostly along Highway 18 and then the Three Mile Lane Bridge. The same is true for bicycles, so you see the same system here in terms of the stress network for bicycles. And what that's saying to us is, we've got to do a better job of creating a network for people to get around in this subarea, both on the north and south side, from a pedestrian and bicycle perspective. And then, we also need to do a better job of creating connectivity to the rest of the community, so across the river into the city center. The transit system is just beginning to grow in this area, so it serves the Three Mile Lane area. It doesn't serve it significantly. There is a fixed route system. It goes to the college, but doesn't go beyond that. It doesn't have, it doesn't have a high frequency in terms of how often it is transporting into this area. We do have some affordable housing developments here, and we also have the Virginia Garcia Clinic, as well as Physician and Medical Center and the hospital. So, we want, we want to be thinking about how can we do a better job of providing connectivity for people who need vehicular access but don't have their own vehicles to do so, to the amenities here. What's interesting, though, is in terms of the vehicular network, it's actually in a fairly good position. So, sometimes when cities go into these area planning processes where the city is built on both sides of the highway, you start to see a lot of conflict in terms of the intersections. But because of all the work that this community did in the 90s and put together a 1996 Highway 18 management plan, where there was a conscientious effort to really control access and start removing access to Highway 18, so that you start preventing the conflicts, we actually have some well-built intersections that still have capacity at them. And then, we also are showing, when we look at safety evaluation, this is hard to see, but red dots are where you've had significant accidents, and then yellow is moderate, and there isn't a lot of red in this highway section for a highway of this nature carrying this many vehicles. So, that's actually a very good thing. So, the work that McMinnville went through in the 90s to put together that Highway 18 plan, the initial one, really did its job. It created a safe environment. Now, we're just taking it to the next step to figure out how do we make this an area that serves the community in terms of economic vitality and moving into the future. So, the economic analysis. Part of our consultant team is Leland Consulting. They're well-known throughout the state for economic analysis, and they looked at where are the opportunities in terms of new development in this particular area. They drew a market area that's larger than McMinnville, and that's typical when you're looking at a market area, because you have a shed that you're pulling from in terms of a consumer market. And then, looking at that, they discovered that McMinnville is a commuter city. So, although we bring a lot of people in to work in McMinnville, we also send a lot of people out of McMinnville who are living here to work elsewhere. This shows the home locations of the people who are traveling to McMinnville to work. It's interesting, because if you look at this, we have a lot of synchronicity with Salem. So, Salem is down there on the lower right, and that's where we're drawing a lot of employees from Salem. But when we look at where we're sending people, so people who live in McMinnville and where they're working, we are sending a lot of people to the Portland metro area, and then also to Salem as well. We looked at development activity in this area since 2010 relative to the rest of the community. So, anything you see that's surrounded in a black outline is something that's occurred since 2010. McMinnville hasn't had a lot of significant commercial and industrial activity since 2010, but you can see it's fairly proportional, what has been occurring. So, we have seen new development in the Three Mile Lane area as well as in the industrial park. The larger box you see there is the Jackson Family Distribution Center.
Are the numbers in that slide square footage?
We also looked at apartments data, because we wanted to understand, is there a market for apartments in McMinnville? And even though, what's interesting is even though we have very low vacancy in our apartment, in the apartment product that we have in McMinnville, we still aren't commanding a high enough rent, ironically, even though it feels like we're in an affordable housing situation right now, that is being able to be financed into building new apartments. And so, we are seeing that there are people who are looking at apartments, trying to pro forma them and put them together, but it's not something that the market's immediately responding to. What we're finding out is those who are building apartments are those who have a large portfolio and are able to leverage effectively. And we have two apartments underway that way.
So, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't fully follow that. You were saying that few apartments are being built because the price point for the rentals is too low in the community?
To support the costs of construction. So, once you get over a certain height in terms of building construction, you're into a whole different type of structural code. It's more expensive, and the market rents aren't supporting that financially. We're still seeing more of the sort of smaller 12-unit structures for apartments, as well as townhomes that are being built as high-density, but we're not seeing sort of the large, you know, 20, 50-unit apartment complexes.
Thank you.
However, with all that said, looking at a 10-year residential demand, we do have need in the community, and we do have projected growth. And so, we tried to assign that into this area to understand how much residential growth we could capture in the Three Mile Lane area. And after doing some market research, Leland Construction's recommendation is that we could probably handle about 200-plus new apartments in the area in terms of market, 100 townhomes, and then single-family as zoning permits, as it's currently zoned. We then looked at retail spending, and this is where there were some aha moments for the group as we were working through this. So, we do have a project advisory committee comprised of community stakeholders who are both residents and business owners and property owners in the area, as well as at-wide community members working on this. And looking at, Leland has access to some data sources that aren't public data sources, so we don't have access to those as a city unless we pay for them. But they were able to generate what retail leakage looks like in McMinnville. And the surprising, the two surprising parts are, so the red is what's leaking out of the community. If you look under General Merchandise, we are leaking close to $100 million a year in general merchandise. So, people are going to, I'm assuming, Salem and the I-5 corridor to do shopping, whatever it is. And then, while they're there, they're also eating, because we also have a significant amount of financial leakage in terms of food and drinking places. So, what that means is there's opportunities to capture that money back into the market. If people from McMinnville are leaving McMinnville and spending that money elsewhere, that's a business opportunity for someone to come in and try to capture that back. Oh, and so with that, Leland Consulting felt that we could absorb, in terms of general merchandise, large format stores, about two stores for that, food, drinking places. They feel we can absorb about 10 more in terms of our market, and then clothing, three-plus stores. So, they, in the analysis, they go through what they feel the market can absorb in the different types of stores for that. The other thing that's occurring is, you know, there is a, there is some anxiety about Big Box. So, there's a lot of discussion in this community about whether people want Big Box or don't want Big Box, and that anxiety exists. And clearly, people are leaving the community to spend their money elsewhere on some of that Big Box shopping, and we want to capture that here, and how do we do that in such a way that's appropriate for McMinnville? But the, but the industry itself is also in an angst position because of what's happening with e-commerce. And so, looking at all of that, we still recognize that in the future, people are still going to be going out and spending money in physical storefronts, because they're looking for experience. to be going out and spending money in physical storefronts because they're looking for experiences. So as we get more and more involved in our technology, and our lives become more and more involved in our technology, we are still going to seek out interaction with each other as experiences, and there will still be a commercial market for that. And all this leads up to what we feel, you know, could be the future for this area in terms of how it serves the community. The office market in McMinnville's interesting. It's very tight. We don't have a lot of office space. We don't actually have any dedicated office zones here. We don't have a business office park. And if, some of the numbers will show that we may not need office space because we're not generating that interest. However, we also have, just in the last two years, we've had three large businesses who are local businesses that are growing and doing very well, so thank goodness for that, who struggled to find space for their growing business. And actually, all three of them located out in this Three Mile Lane area as the evergreen office buildings became available. So we were able to keep them in our community because we had that built stock, but we don't have any additional built stock for that. And we don't have dedicated space for that type of office environment. And as we, in terms of the future growth of office, the office market, it is looking for experiential campuses. So people want to locate somewhere where they're providing a good experience for their employees. And so making a conscientious effort as to how you set the table for that is something that cities are talking about and doing. And so with that location of those three businesses in the Three Mile Lane area, we've had a lot of discussion about, that's sort of the start, and we can build upon that and start creating those amenities there.
I have a question to jump in, and it could be an earmark for something later, but I'd love to learn more about currently what our efforts are for marketing us and that experiential package. I know we have a couple of organizations doing different things, but for later, maybe as a body, as this body, I'd like to hear more about what our current efforts are.
Okay.
And what those look like.
And I think MEDP has a presentation for you very shortly in the agenda items. But if you have questions specific for me, I'd be happy to answer that. And I don't know if Fee is still here, but he is one of the businesses that located out there, so that might be a good question for him. In terms of industrial space, that's also very tight in McMinnville right now. So we've had, our vacancies have gone, declined almost to zero when we were at 16% vacancy in 2014. So our speculative buildings have all been filled in. People are expanding their businesses, or they're trying to find either new space to expand into or expanding their existing footprint. And so, and that's usually, they're looking for smaller acreage. So I talked about how Highway 18 has some really large contiguous properties. It has two 90-acre properties. We don't have a lot of the fives and the tens and the twos in terms of industrial land available here in McMinnville. And we don't have a lot of speculative building either, and so there's a lot of discussion of where is the best place to put that. And then obviously, quick tourism is a growing market in McMinnville and doing very well. We have a tourist commercial zone. We have about five acres zoned into our tourist commercial zone. And so we're looking at that and thinking, how do we serve that industry better as we move that forward into the future? So the anticipated development mix for this area that we're looking at is residential, multifamily in terms of townhomes and garden apartments, as the market will serve that right now, doing some sort of mid-to-large format retail. The general merchandise that is, in terms of the leakage that's occurring, but doing it in such a way that it's experiential, so experiences and special to McMinnville, not your generic forum center. Looking at low-rise office opportunities in terms of a business park, doing craft industrial as part of that McMinnville experience, and mixed-use commercial, as well as lodging and hospitality. There's been a lot of public engagement in this. I talked about the advisory committee that's been meeting. We also have had a couple of public outreach opportunities that have been well-attended. And then we've been working independently with the property owners that are in this area. We brought together the property owners that have the large contiguous area of industrial land south of Highway 18 and visited with them about how do we masterplan these so that as these properties develop, they work with each other and really leverage effectively. And they haven't all been together in a room like that, talking about what their vision is for their property in the future. So it was a great opportunity to do that, and we matched them up with our consultant team, and there's been a lot of really good conversation that's come out of that. We will have a master plan that the consultant team will deliver to them as a potential for them to consider moving forward. Part of that process was looking at what are the opportunities, and that's where we started having the discussion of the view sheds that are in this area and all the different property opportunities that many people probably don't realize exist because they're just looking at highway frontage. This is a picture, I'm sorry it's so dark, but we brought the project advisory together, committee together and did a design charrette for this area that was really well-received. We did a public open house, and we also did a survey as well that were both well-received. At the public open houses, we're getting about 100-plus people coming to those and engaging with us. And then just recently, last month, we had a town hall and did a charrette again with neighbors that were in the area. So what this all leads to is, we're developing what we call a preferred option for both transportation and land use. And then we will take that preferred option and put it through a detailed analysis as to what does that mean for the transportation infrastructure to support those land uses and the development code that we need to incentivize them. So to go through those really quickly with you, there's common elements. So we can't move the UGB boundaries in this effort, so they remain the same. The airport lands remain the same. And the local roadway designs are adaptable to any land use concept. So the right-of-way is there, and they can serve the land use concept on the frontage. In terms of transportation, some of the common elements is connecting Cumulus Avenue to Southwest Norton Lane through or adjacent to Schmetzka Community College. Looking at more complete streets, that means more streets with bicycle and pedestrian amenities, improving Three Mile Lane Bridge for bicycle and pedestrian safety, and you're going to have a presentation at your next city council meeting from the ODOT project manager for that project. And then new and improved bicycle and pedestrian connections throughout the area. That's been the number-one wish list from the public as we've gone through the public outreach process, is that connectivity. Urban design, how to take advantage of what's unique to McMinnville and what's unique to the area. And then the parks and trails. There's natural features here that are beautiful in terms of the Yamhill River, Galen-McBee Airport Park, and the ability to connect with Joe Dancer. We put together three different alternatives. We brought it to the committee and the public, and you have those in your packet. And what happened was, they took all the best pieces of all three and put together this last preferred alternative. And this looks at doing a tourism area up by the Space and Aviation Museum, so rezoning that into tourist commercial and really looking at how that can serve a tourism industry. And then it takes those two large properties that are south of Highway 18 and looks at a opportunity for retail that's frontaged to Highway 18, and then a corporate campus behind it. That sort of creates that craft industrial, the smaller industrial spec space, but also an opportunity for a business park that connects with the existing business park that's occurring out there. And then it looks at better connectivity for the residential neighborhoods on the northwest side. Terms of transportation, the consultants brought two options for that. One was full interchanges at the existing interchange at Three Mile Lane, and then also another one at Cumulus Avenue and a roundabout at Cirrus Avenue. And the first part of the existing interchange is to make it more friendly to get into McMinnville. So right now, when you exit off of Highway 18 there, it's a little difficult to find your way to McMinnville off the exit. And so the first thing to do would be to reorganize that so that it's easier to get into McMinnville itself. And then looking at what an interchange would look like at Cumulus in terms of land consumption as well as transportation effect. Because we're looking for bicycle pedestrian connectivity, this would not allow connectivity with the interchanges across north-south, so there would be overpasses that are dedicated to bicycles and peds. And to do that, you actually are sinking the highway down a little bit, so you're not creating this huge arch that people have to go over. And so it created a sort of grade differential between the local street network and the highway. The committee wasn't thrilled with that design option. The other design option was three roundabouts, so Cirrus Avenue, Cumulus Avenue, and Norton Lane, all being roundabouts. The roundabout discussion came because there's a planned roundabout on Highway 18 just outside the city and the county. And again, that was looking at, you know, fixing the interchange, and then the thought was maybe it would be better in terms of traffic flow, getting connectivity to, emergency connectivity to the hospital, and land consumption would be less. However, it's still fairly problematic in terms of functionality. And so again, the committee did not think that was a great idea either. So they put together a hybrid of those two that you see, had a lot of discussion of, do we need interchanges right now? Could we improve the existing intersections that are currently working and still have capacity? And build them in such a way that they could have more capacity but still operate that way with full turning movements? And so the preferred alternative that's come out of this is fix the interchange at Three Mile Lane and then do signalized intersections at Norton Lane and Cumulus and a roundabout at Cirrus Avenue. So the next steps are, those two design alternatives, the two hybrids, will be put through this sort of deeper analysis by ODOT and the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And then in the fall, we'll bring that analysis back to the project advisory committee, and we'll do a public event to say, what does this mean? Can this actually work? Does the transportation support it? And from there, we'll move forward with our deeper dive into development code and the area plan. So with that, we just wanted to make sure you were updated on how that's moving forward. A couple of your counselors are serving on the committee with us and participating in the design discussions.
Any questions for Heather? Adam?
This might be the cart in front of the horse, but on some of those larger industrial lands, is there any, like, large utilities already currently at those that would support large retail tenant like Costco or Best Buy or any of the other leakage that we've been seeing?
So Mack Water and Light is looking to put in a substation, a substation, right, in this area?
I can save that question for the next presentation.
Sorry, the next. So Mack Water and Light is looking at improving their utility out in this area. They need to anyways, and they're looking for a site to do so. Our wastewater capacity, we'll be working on updating our wastewater facility plan as we go into some growth analysis. Right now, it's set up to serve the existing uses. We think it could probably serve this preferred alternative, but in terms of the amount of housing that would go in there, if we went further than what was suggested by the consultants, we may have issues in that regard, especially south of Highway 18.
Thank you.
But we'll do more work on the utility piece of it after we get through this analysis.
Okay.
Other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. And again, you know, as we continue through this process, feel free to drop in on any of the meetings. They have been just fabulous, very good engagement with the property owners, the business owners out in that area. And I think we've made tremendous headway in just visioning what it could be with input from our community residents.
Yeah, I hope I'm sending it to all the city counselors. If we have more than who's on the committee, come, let me know because we have to notice it. But one thing I've gathered from this is, people want to participate. The charrettes have been very well-received, and people have been very interested in having the opportunity to sit down and participate and be heard and be part of the process for what the future looks like. So it's been a good experience.
And thank you, Heather. That takes us to our advice and information items this evening, and reports from counselors on committee and board assignments. I think I'll start with Zach.
Thank you. Pretty slow. I missed the last landscape meeting, Historic Landmarks Committee, our KOB, Technical Advisory Committee is coming to a head, and Susan, Adam, and I, as well as staff, are putting together our presentation to council on our recommendations. In fact, one of our KOB tech members is here, and we'll be bringing that to council and giving some good directions. So that's my major update.
Thank you. Wendy?
So we had a great MIRAC meeting. We had a nice presentation. We looked at the development that's going to be going in on Lafayette. They're moving forward on that. They're actually, one of the things we were considering was, initially, when we put together that Northeast Gateway, we had decided not to allow drive-throughs on Lafayette, but we had a long discussion about that. And one of the things that makes it financially feasible for them to complete the development that they're looking at doing is to have, in addition to pedestrian-friendly, also having a drive-through option. And so the committee talked a lot about that, and we decided with some conditions that that would be okay on Lafayette since it's a different part of town, so that will be coming back to us later. And we looked at a number of other things during the meeting that would move forward, a couple of other projects. Drawing a blank on what other--
The boutique.
Oh, the boutique we looked at, that's right. We looked, talked in-depth about the mini-houses and the designs of those. We did decide not to move forward until we had a little bit of additional information. We wanted to see more of the design, more detailed designs, because we just have conceptual drawings. And some additional information about parking. Right now, we don't have requirements on parking, but we can ask for more information about how, what their parking plan is. And so we were a little bit concerned about that. So we decided to ask for additional information before we decided to move that forward on that. So, did I miss anything else?
My thing.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you. Adam?
YCOM, we didn't have a meeting July or August. Looks like we probably won't have one September, so we'll probably have a busy October. Airport Commission, we looked at the Comcast lease, which is in the packet for this evening for consideration. The airshow's coming up in September. On the website here, it looks like there's still some general admission tickets and a little bit of reserved seating left on Friday night, but Saturday and Sunday's sold out, so if you're looking to go. And then there's some more expensive presidential and beer garden seats, so should be a good event. Hopefully, it goes as smooth as we all are planning for it to, and doesn't put any undue stress on Chief Skills or the other city staff. Outside of that, I would like to highlight our newly promoted Captain Barstody in the back room there. Thanks for joining us. And there's quite a few others that got promoted and sworn in as well, so maybe stop by the fire hall and wish them all well.
Thank you, Adam. Sal?
Pretty light report this week, Mr. Mayor. I did stop by today and visited Agulix. You might recall, in December, we started Styrofoam recycling, and Agulix is the vendor that converts that Styrofoam into plastic, and they're expanding their operations significantly. And so I had an opportunity to kind of go see what they're all about, and that was really interesting, and I think we're going to see some great things in plastic and Styrofoam recycling, both in MAC and around the state, coming forward. Mid Valley Cog, September meeting is canceled, or excuse me, August meeting is canceled, so we won't be meeting again until September. I'm planning on inviting the head of the Senate Revenue Committee to come talk about local tax policy. It'd be good, Mr. Mayor, if you have some time in the next week, towards the end of the next week, if you can give me some times that you might be available to meet with them, that'd be great.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you, Sal.
Visit McMinnville, good meetings. Several of the things that came up during the meeting, since we've been doing some planning, we're going to be talking tonight about Airbnbs and additional revenue. But also, as a part of that, there's a tremendous amount of work they've been doing as far as free advertising, putting out like $3,000 that catches the eye of a much, of a person that has much larger blogging ability or magazine ability, and walking off with $100,000 worth of advertising. So McMinnville does a good job with this. Strategic placements, Jeff is extremely good at working on-- Jeff is extremely good at working on our overall placement with Travel Oregon and the other surrounding DMOs. So I think he leverages us much higher than most DMO administrators do. Affordable housing, most of the discussion surrounded what is happening with the Housing Authority. There is some discussion tonight. We are adding a new, we're adding a couple new, no, just one new member to this. What we're trying to get from the Housing Authority is a member that can do construction. So that's where we're at on those two committees.
Thank you, Kelly. From my perspective, the Dundee, Newburgh Dundee bypass, we're meeting this coming Thursday morning. Had an opportunity to spend a part of the week before down in Medford with the Oregon Mayor's Association. And were able, we had approximately 85 mayors throughout the state of Oregon there, and a great opportunity to network. A couple of things that were of significance from my perspective is the directors of the state, the state of Oregon departments are all there. And so, you get to have a one-on-one, you have to wait in line to do that, but an opportunity and had an opportunity to meet with an individual from ODOT, second in charge as they're replacing and doing the things they're doing there, and talking about the Newburgh Dundee bypass and just how slow that process is going. We've got money set aside, and it just seems like we're not moving. And I was able to get out of him that the bypass still isn't the kind of priority that we want it to be. And so, we'll be talking about that on Thursday morning. Also, received a call from our lobbyist consultant today, and the OTC, the Oregon Transportation Committee, has significant dollars coming into them through the feds and to the state, and they're able to earmark that. And Newburgh Dundee bypass isn't a part of that at all. So we're strategizing how we can get in front of the right people very shortly. They meet this coming Friday down in Ashland, so the ability to get down there is going to be very difficult. The one other piece that I was just very excited about, when we were down in Medford, had an opportunity to visit a, what they're calling, an urban campsite. And it's called Hope Village. And I brought material back, and I think Jeff's talked to Heather a little bit about that. But today, we canceled our countywide housing solutions meeting. Commissioner Kula, they ran over today. They had a large discussion there, so we canceled that. But I've got some great information, I think, that could be beneficial to McMinnville in a design and an approach that's working very well in Medford. And so, more to come from that as we, as we talk about solutions for affordable housing in transition. Let's go ahead, and from our department heads, Chief?
Yeah, real quickly, Mayor and Council. We, I wanted to give a quick shout-out to Parks and Rec for our partnership last week with National Night Out. I think it went well partnering with Concerts in the Park, which was a fabulous venue. So that's fantastic. To piggyback on Counselor Garvin's Airport Commission report, we continue, along with the Fire Department and other local agencies, Department of Justice, State Police, plan the event for the International Airshow. It's going to be, we've got tremendous partners in this area, and I don't think that we mentioned that enough. State Police has really stepped up, as have the Fire Department, and I know Portland Fire, at least the PDX, their airport fire departments are going to step up big. That planning is going exceptionally well. Our staff is ready for it, and we continue to meet weekly as, as we move closer towards the end of September. Just graduated somebody from the academy, Cody Miller. On Friday, we're excited to get him, his dad is Deputy Chief of Salem Police, and we're excited to get him on board to have two in the academy. And we're working with our HR department to onboard a couple more, from retirement of Toby Carver, retired after about 30 years, and then the pending retirement of Officer Harmon at the end of this year. So busy time, we've got Cruising McMinnville, the 24th that we're prepping for, and we'll be out and about for that one as well. So a busy summer season of events, and we're managing that well with our staff stepping up to the plate. So that's what I've got.
Thank you, Chief. Kelly? I know you're busy.
Just a couple of updates to Mayor and members of the council. We have, our classification and compensation project is underway. You may recall a presentation a while back when we were at the community center. So we've since selected a vendor. We're working with Gallagher Benefit Services. We've kicked off the project. It's anticipated to last about another seven months or so. All of our lovely employees are completing in-depth questionnaires about their work that they do. Thank you. We should have that project rolling right along, and an update for you with a presentation as we get closer to the end, with the recommendations on, on what we might want to implement. We also have entered into an agreement with NeoGov. It's an applicant tracking system, so all of our recruitments will soon be only online, and I'm really excited about that. We'll kind of step that game up a little bit. It'll help us be more consistent in our, with our candidates' experiences as applicants with us. It'll also help us with our records management and just an improved experience for new hires as they start. They can get a lot of their paperwork that HR loves to have people fill out done before they get started. We do have a really important holiday on Thursday I'd like to let you all know about. If you could grab your cellphones and get ready to take some City Hall selfies. Thursday is City Hall Selfie Day. It's part of the Engaging Local Government Leaders Network. As you're resident millennial, I feel like I have to like talk about that. City Hall Selfie Day is a day to promote engagement with your local government and to show civic pride. So if you have some time on Thursday, feel free to swing by City Hall and snap a picture in front of there, and you can post it to any social media outlet with the hashtag #CityHallSelfie. Thanks.
Thank you.
Heather?
Yes, so Mayor and Councilors, just one thing. Tomorrow morning at 8:30, we have our Third Street Streetscape Improvement Project Advisory Committee meeting. We'll be reviewing the project charter, so vision, goals, objectives, and principles of the design. And then, we'll be working on the next phase of that project, which we'll be really looking at design and construction over the next two years, so.
Thank you, Heather. Mike? Melissa? Jeff?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. A part of your packet is the cash and investment report and for your, your review. Next takes us to our consent agenda for this evening. We have two OLCC requests. Is there any councilor that would request to have any items removed from our consent agenda? Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved by Wendy and seconded by Adam. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Consent agenda passes unanimously five to zero. That takes us to our resolutions this evening. We first will consider Resolution 2019-56, a resolution authorizing the acquisition of property for the old Sheridan Road Improvement Project and exercising the power of eminent domain. And so, I think we'll call in Mike to do that.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet from Project Manager Larry Sherwood. Also included is the vicinity map, which is shown on the screen, exhibit maps regarding the acquisition of three pieces of right-of-way and four temporary construction easements, as well as the draft resolution for your consideration. So this particular resolution will authorize the acquisition of those three right-of-way parcels and four temporary construction easement parcels to allow the construction of the old Sheridan Road corridor project. We did recently have an open house that was well-attended, and Larry Sherwood's done an excellent job of individual outreach to each of the properties along the corridor. So all of the property owners are aware that this process is moving forward. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend that the council adopt the resolution as presented.
Any questions for Mike?
Were any concerns raised by the property owners affected?
So I was at the open house for the first hour, and it was pretty well-attended, and there weren't concerns. There were a lot of questions. There'll be some public outreach as we move towards construction bidding. The biggest question will be folks understanding how we're going to detour traffic while we need to be closed for three months to tear out the old bridge and build the new bridge. And so, there are some detour routes that are planned that take vehicle traffic on Cypress and Fellows and pedestrian traffic down Goucher. And we'll, we'll be doing a lot more public outreach as we get close to construction, which is planned for next calendar year. It's about a six-month project. But other than that, I just offer that Larry's done an excellent job bringing the property owners along with this process, and, and they were all fully engaged and informed before we had the open house. And I've not heard any substantive concerns that we're not able to address as part of the design and construction package.
Yeah, I know, you know, on Old Sheridan, right now, going east, you know, the, the traffic's queuing back almost to Goucher. And, and so, there's going to be, I hate to say this, but some traffic calming when we expand and do the things that we need to do there. So I know a few people that live down in that area, and they're excited about the project. It's just the length and how long it's going to take to get to the finished product. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none. I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-56.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Zach and seconded by Kelly. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. This Resolution 2019-56 passes five to zero. Thank you. The next resolution is 2019-55, a resolution approving a lease amendment and extension with Comcast of Oregon Incorporated. And so, Mike, I'll ask you to address this.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. There is a very brief staff report that I put together in the packet, as well as the proposed resolution and the proposed lease amendment and extension document. City Attorney Kosch was instrumental in negotiating the lease amendment and extension. When Comcast came to us asking for the lease extension, which is allowed under their current lease, they asked for modifications to the lease payment increase calculation section. At the same time, we have interest in using some of the parking, in their parking lot that they're not using. And former engineering manager, Rich Spofford, and, and City Attorney Kosch were able to work with Comcast to come to an agreement where we agreed in concept and in terms to modification to their payment increase calculation, moving that from a CPI calculation to a fixed 2.5% in exchange for the use of 20 parking spaces in their parking lot, which will greatly help with some issues I'm dealing with regarding parking within the fence of the airport. I was remiss, and I appreciate a couple of questions that Counselor Peralta had this afternoon. I was remiss in noting that the first year of the lease is actually, represents a 7.5% increase in their lease amount, moving from $823 to $884.73 a month. That was largely in part to City Attorney Kosch's work to try to bring us closer to market. And I know Counselor Peralta had one further question, kind of late before the meeting, regarding that amount. And the distinction with several of these airport land leases is we're just leasing land. That's their building. We don't own the building. The building goes away when their lease ends, and so, it's, it's purely a land lease. I contrast that to the OSP building, which we actually own the building and have to maintain the building, and it's a much different lease price point for the city-owned facility versus just the land that we're leasing them. So that's, this lease amount, especially when it moves to the 885 a month, is in line with the land lease rates we've been using, most particularly the Pot Cake Aviation Hangar that was just built. This price point is in line with that lease that was just executed a couple of years ago. So City Attorney Kosch did bring us to market on the lease, and then we, in exchange for the parking, we're agreeing to the fixed CPI for the remainder of the lease period. So unless there are any questions, I'd like to thank David for his work, if he's still on the phone, and then recommend that the council adopt the resolution as presented.
Thank you, Mike. Any further questions for Mike?
No, I just want to say, Mike, thanks for answering those questions and clarifying my misunderstanding, so I'm comfortable with it.
Good. Any others? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-55.
So moved.
And second, it's been moved by Sal, seconded by Kelly. All those who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay.
Ordinance number 2019-55 passes unanimously five to zero. That takes us to Resolution 2019-52, a resolution amending the composition of the Affordable Housing Task Force. And so, Heather, we'll turn that over to you to present.
Yes, so Mayor, I'm going to present for both Resolution Number 2019-52 and 2-53. At their last meeting, Affordable Housing Task Force voted to recommend amending the makeup of the Affordable Housing Task Force to add a youth liaison. As you know, we've been trying to add a youth member to all of our committees. We have had a youth coming to the last couple of meetings who's been providing valuable input and expressed an interest in participating, so we were happy to see that. Resolution 2019-52 adds the youth membership to the overall makeup of the task force, and then Resolution 2019-53 appoints Ethan McKay to be that youth member for the first three-year term.
He's a good kid. Any questions of Heather? Ethan has been attending the last couple of ones and has very insightful questions and brings a good perspective, I think, to the committee. So hearing no questions, let's go ahead, and I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2019-52.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Kelly and seconded by Wendy. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Resolution 2019-52 passes unanimously five to two, or five to zero. We are then now looking at Resolution 2019-53, a resolution appointing a member to the Affordable House Force. And Heather has already given that information to us, and the name Ethan--
McKay.
McKay.
McKay has been nominated to fill that, that term. So do I have a motion to approve--
Can we have a little discussion real quick?
What's that?
Is this for two people, Ethan McKay and Vicki--
One.
Yerberg?
Just one.
Oh, okay.
Just one youth.
My apologies, you should have gotten a revised packet notification--
I'm looking at--
--yesterday, I believe. We did revise the Resolution 2019-53 originally. It had two members recommended. We currently have a vacancy as well for nonprofit housing provider. As Counselor Manke indicated in her comments, there's interest in bringing someone online with development experience from one of our nonprofit housing partners because of the amount of money that's being released by the state over the next biennium for development projects, close to $400 million. We want to do all we can to support our partners to be able to access those funds and bring some projects into our community. We reached out to the Housing Authority. They recommended somebody to be on the task force. Not, we hadn't indicated our preference in terms of development experience, and they recommended their finance director. We got back to the interim executive director, who's the board-- interim executive director, who's the board chair right now, and said we'd like to have some further dialogue as we think it's pretty critical that we work on development projects. So the chair and vice chair make the recommendations to you, the city council, in terms of appointments. They have elected to pull the finance director's application off the table for right now as they continue to explore that. And the amended resolution is just for the youth appointment.
Thank you, Heather. And so Resolution 2019-53 has the name of Ethan McKay, a youth to be appointed. So do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Adam.
So in his application, it says he's a high school graduate. But his term runs through 2022. So by definition of youth, they just need to be appointed while they're a youth and then they can serve out their term outside of being a youth. And then somebody else is going to get appointed to a new term they could never have.
Yeah, so what we haven't done is actually defined age thresholds for youth. You'll see that in the previous resolution. We didn't do that. And we have looked at as both high school and college opportunities.
Okay. Thank you.
Good clarification. Thank you.
Anyway, so moved.
Second. So it's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Zach. All in favor of approving Resolution 2019-53, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. This resolution passes unanimously five to zero. This takes us to our ordinances for this evening. We have the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5074, 5075, 5076, and 5077. The next four items are related to one development project that are separate land use decisions. If no one objects, I would suggest that we consider the first reading of all four of them at the same time, and then the staff present on all four of them in one staff report. Does any councilor object to having the ordinances read by title only? Hearing none. Then we'll have the city recorder do the first reading of 5074, and then we'll go 5075, 76, and 77. Melissa?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5074, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation of the property at 1901 Northwest Baker Creek Road from a mixture of commercial and residential to only residential. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5075, an ordinance amending the zoning designation of the property at 1901 Northwest Baker Creek Road from a mixture of R1, single-family residential, and EF80, exclusive farm use, to only R1, single-family residential. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5076, an ordinance amending an existing planned development overlay district to remove the property at 1901 Northwest Baker Creek Road from the planned development overlay district. This is the first reading of ordinance number 5077, an ordinance approving a conditional use to allow the expansion of an existing electrical power substation at 1901 Northwest Baker Creek Road.
Thank you, Melissa. We'll now call in Senior Planner Chuck Darnell to present to us. Chuck?
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. As Melissa just extensively shared, this is for four ordinances, for four land use requests, for one development project, 1901 Northwest Baker Creek Road. So this is the location of the site. It's the existing location of the Baker Creek Substation owned and managed by McMinnville Water and Light. Just for a little bit of background of the history of the site, because it's what has led to the requests that are before you tonight. The original substation lot, the existing lot, was originally annexed in 1977. Until that time, there was a comprehensive plan map amendment conducted in 1996 that changed half of the property and all the property to the west to commercial and adopted a planned development overlay district that still applies to the property today. In 1999, there was a conditional use for the existing substation. And then in 2008, the surrounding land around the substation was annexed in, including a portion of the site as it exists today. The site has expanded in terms of its property lines recently. Water and Light acquired the surrounding property, as shown in that graphic there, to expand their property line. That would allow for an expansion of the substation. That property line adjustment expanded into, further into the county zone that exists around the site from its previous annexation. So a condition of approval on the property line adjustment was that prior to development of the site, they bring the property into one comprehensive plan map designation and one zone. And that's actually required by our code, particularly because it's county zoning, which requires a rezone into an urban zone prior to any urban development occurring. So that's what's led to the four requests that are before you tonight by the applicant, McMinnville Water and Light. So they're proposing to amend the comprehensive plan map from the mixture of commercial and residential to only residential, to complete a zone change from the mixture of R1 and EF80 to just R1. As a result of those requests, they're requesting the planned development amendment to remove the property from the commercial planned development that exists on the surrounding property to the west, and then a conditional use to allow for the actual expansion of the electrical substation because it's a conditional use in the R1 zone. And just one point of clarification, typically, a conditional use doesn't come to the city council, the final decisions by the planning commission. But because all four applications were submitted concurrently, the code requires that it go through the process that allows the most opportunity for review. So it's coming before you tonight for your review and consideration. These are just some maps showing the proposal. The map on the left shows the existing comprehensive plan map. The map on the right shows what it would be if the comp plan amendment was approved. Similarly, the map on the left shows the existing zoning, and the map on the right shows the proposed zoning. So you can see that the majority of the site is actually not in a urban city zone. It's in the county zoning from when it was annexed. This is the eventual proposed use of the site. It's a little dark, but in the aerial, you can see the existing equipment that's on the site today. They'd basically be duplicating that, doubling it, and expanding the substation. Looking through the comprehensive plan and zone change review criteria, both of those are the same, but they are two separate actions. But just touching on some of the key findings that are in the decision documents and the ordinances, I won't go through all of them in detail, but I'll just touch on some of the higher ones. In terms of housing and residential development, the proposal allows for that to continue by increasing the electrical system in this area to support further growth and development of the residential and commercial lands in the surrounding area. In terms of the change from commercial to residential, there is a deficit of both commercial and residential lands in our most recently acknowledged economic opportunity analysis and buildable lands inventory. So while you're taking away a small amount of commercial land, you are still addressing a residential land need. And specifically, that R1 residential land need that's identified in the 2003 buildable lands inventory. And in that work, there was an assumption that some of that residential land would be for infrastructure uses. So that's what this would address as well. There's also a number of comp plan policies about supporting energy and providing adequate energy supplies for the community as it expands. Some of the other comprehensive plan and zone change criteria call for the amendment to be orderly and timely and consistent with the surrounding development pattern in the surrounding area. The consolidation of the lot into one comp plan designation and zone really allows for better development of the site rather than the mixed zones that apply to the site today. And going to that residential land and the R1 zone provides for the most opportunity for review of their eventual use, which is the expansion of the substation as a conditional use instead of a potentially permitted use in one of our other zones. So that's why they've proposed the land and zone that they have. And this map just kind of shows that the surrounding area is also guided for residential. It's not inconsistent with the surrounding area. The planned development amendment is an existing planned development amendment. Again, it covers the commercial area to the north and west. The red area on the map there, north of Baker Creek Road, is the boundary of that planned development overlay. It was adopted in 1996. And again, it was commercial in its purpose. And based on their request to go to residential, they wouldn't be developing to a commercial need anymore. So they're requesting to remove their site from the commercial PD and just reduce the size of that overlay. We've included a, and the planning commission has included a suggested condition to, that all remaining standards and requirements of that PD would remain in place for the property that is still within the boundary. And then finally, is the conditional use request for the actual expansion of the substation, which is what's driving the requests before you tonight. Just again, the use is a conditional use in the R1 zone. Included a photo here of the site. This is not what it looks like today, but prior to some recent changes. But this is basically what was reviewed and approved as a conditional use back in 1999 for the existing facility. And then again, on the right, it's showing that they're proposing to expand that and the equipment footprint of the site. These are all the conditional use review criteria. I won't go through them in detail, but I'll just touch on some that are more applicable. One is that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. There's a number of policies, as I mentioned before, about energy systems, but also about how energy facilities are designed to be compatible with the surrounding area. So the applicant has proposed a site plan that includes some things that provide for some buffering and compatibility with the surrounding area. The site's expanding pretty significantly compared to what it is today in terms of where the boundaries are and the equipment is located. The setbacks of the equipment is going to be much more than it is today. And they'll have a drive aisle around the outside, so there will be some space between the equipment and the surrounding land uses. And then they've also provided a landscape plan that they propose to provide some buffering and screening of the site around the perimeter. It includes a wider landscaped area on the south side, adjacent to Baker Creek Road, and then sidewalk and street trees where, where possible, not able to do so in the BPA easement due to height restrictions of vegetation. But, and then in the surrounding areas around the perimeter, having some landscape buffering space with both shrubs and trees around the perimeter of the site.
Chuck, has this gone to the landscape review committee yet?
It hasn't. So that's kind of typical with our conditional uses is we'll have, if there's a landscape plan, sometimes they'll be provided just to show the intent of doing so, but that the landscape plan itself will go to the landscape review committee for their detailed review of the actual plant species and everything. That's a condition of approval that we're suggesting. Just to touch on some of the conditions of approval on the conditional use, there are some related to infrastructure and utilities, basically requiring the Baker Creek Road be improved to our current city standards for that type of road. McMinnville Water and Light has already dedicated the necessary right-of-way and public utility easement to allow for the widening of that street and sidewalk and planter strip along that north side of Baker Creek Road adjacent to their site. We've included a condition, number three, to allow for coordination between the McMinnville Water and Light and the surrounding property owner because they are in, have submitted for land use review for future development, just to minimize construction impacts in the surrounding area to allow for that coordination to occur if possible. We put a timeframe in there that is consistent with an agreement that McMinnville Water and Light already has with the surrounding property owner in terms of a timeframe of when that coordination could occur. In terms of the site design and operation, some of the conditions that are included are to require landscaping consistent with the landscape plan that was submitted. So these things were already proposed by the applicant in terms of the sight obscuring fence around the perimeter, two-rail fence, consistent with the south side of Baker Creek Road, that white picket fence design, and then shrubs and trees around the perimeter. We did have some discussion with Water and Light and had some amendments that the planning commission made to the condition to address security and operations of the site. And so limiting the height of trees that are around it, but still having some trees that provide a little bit of taller screening of the site from surrounding properties. Planting of street trees in the Baker Creek right-of-way and then just memorializing some of the lighting practices and standards that the applicant proposed in their application. These things were proposed by them in terms of how the maintenance lighting and things like that operates to minimize unnecessary lighting for surrounding residential uses. The public meeting, neighborhood meeting process occurred, neighborhood meeting. There wasn't any public attendance at, and the public hearing was conducted, and there wasn't any public testimony received on that either. Like I mentioned briefly, staff did work with McMinnville Water and Light staff on amending a couple of those conditions of approval based on their comments in terms of safety and functionality of the site, and some of their requirements that they have to meet for just electrical supply stations in general. Planning Commission supported those, and those are the ones that are included in your packet tonight. So with that, Planning Commission recommended approval of the four ordinances with the few conditions I mentioned tonight. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Chuck. Any specific questions for Chuck? I recognize we've got John and Scott and Sam in the audience from Mac Water and Light, and they could also answer any questions you might have. But anything?
Go ahead, Adam.
I'll just mention there was a detailed analysis in the application materials and their electrical supply study that warranted the expansion of the site here based on the loads of the surrounding areas and the cost effectiveness of this expansion of the site rather than a new site. I didn't mention that in my presentation, but there's a lot of information in the packet about that.
Thank you, Chuck. Adam?
As far as the size of the expansion, it's similar currently to the substation on West Second by visual size. Is it gonna be triple that size? Like, or nothing that we really see visually?
It looks about one or two acres.
Okay. That's similar to Ed Gormley's substation out there off.
Two acres.
Okay. Thank you for the context and thank you for the redundancy you're building into the system.
Thank you, Adam. Any other questions?
I just want to make a comment.
Go ahead.
I appreciated all the detail in the report and both in the application and the report. It really gave a comprehensive view, and I think it makes a lot of sense. And I do also appreciate the redundancy in the system. I think it was clear that it's needed. So.
Yeah, I can just, from sitting on the commission, I can tell you that Mac Water and Light, when it comes to emergency preparedness and some of the things that we may take for granted, they're really putting a proactive approach there, putting the client number one and always being prepared. And this redundancy is going to be, I think, a great addition to the system and therefore the benefit of the client. So. Any other questions? Okay. City council has the opportunity to schedule a public hearing on this ordinance or to ask for a second reading of the ordinance. What is your pleasure? Go ahead, Zach.
I'd be in favor of a second reading.
Okay.
I'd be in favor in the second reading.
Okay. Then I will ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5074, the second.
So moved.
To a second reading. I guess we have to do all, the second reading's all individual? Or can we do that all together?
Individually.
Individually, okay. Okay, so we have a motion for...
I second it.
Okay. So was it Adam?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I haven't lost my mind yet. Adam and Kelly, that, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any, any, any opposed, please signify by saying nay. And so this ordinance, number 5074, passes on its first reading unanimously. I will now ask the city recorder to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5074, an ordinance amending the comprehensive plan map designation of the property at 1901 Northwest Baker Creek Road from a mixture of commercial and residential to only residential.
Thank you, Melissa. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5074.
So moved.
And a second. It's been moved by Sal and seconded by Zach. Ask the city recorder to poll the council. Melissa?
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Geary?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Councilor Stossens?
Aye.
Council President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5074 is adopted by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. We'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5075 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
It's been passed by Zach, seconded by Wendy. All those in favor, please signify All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. I will ask, well, ordinance number 5075 passes on the first reading unanimously. Will now ask the city recorder to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5075, an ordinance amending the zoning designation of the property at 1901 Northwest Baker Creek Road from a mixture of R1 single-family residential and EF 80 exclusive varmuse to only R1 single-family residential.
Thank you, Melissa. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5075.
So moved.
Second.
Adopted by Wendy, seconded by Zach. I'll call on the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Stossens?
Aye.
Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5075 is adopted by a vote of five to zero. Thank you. We'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5076 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
We had Adam and Sal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Ordinance number 5076 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will now ask the city recorder to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5076, an ordinance amending an existing planned development overlay district to remove the property at 1901 Northwest Baker Creek Road from the planned development overlay district.
Thank you, Melissa. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5076.
So moved.
Second.
It's been adopted, first motion by Wendy, second by Adam. I'll ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Stossens?
Aye.
Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5076 is adopted by a vote of five to zero. I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5077 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Zach and seconded by Adam. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, by saying nay. Ordinance number 5077 passes its first reading unanimously. I will ask the city recorder to read the ordinance by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5077, an ordinance approving a conditional use to allow for the expansion of an existing electrical power substation at 1901 Northwest Baker Creek Road.
Thank you. I will ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5077.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Wendy and seconded by Zach. I'll ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Counselor Garvin?
Aye.
Counselor Geary?
Aye.
Counselor Peralta?
Aye.
Counselor Stossens?
Aye.
Counselor President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5077 is adopted by a vote of five to zero. We now have the first reading with a possible second reading of ordinance number 5078. Does the council, does any counselor object to having this ordinance read by title only? Hearing done. Will the city recorder please read the ordinance into the record?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5078, an ordinance amending Title II of the McMinnville Municipal Code, creating Chapter 2.5 establishing a civil code enforcement process.
Thank you, Melissa. Looks like we have our planning director, Heather Richards, here to present, and we've got our two code enforcers with us this evening. So Heather, welcome. Thank you, gentlemen.
Great.
Welcome, Heather.
Sorry, I cut the chief doing this earlier, so. We'll put a little energy into this. So tonight, after a year, we're bringing to you our proposed code amendments for the McMinnville City Code for our code compliance program. So it's an exciting night. I was gonna say that Nick and Claudia sat through a long meeting to get here, but they've actually sat through a much longer process to get here. So you have two ordinances in front of you. One to amend the McMinnville City Code for civil code enforcement process, one that will make, amend the McMinnville City Code for public nuisances, and then a resolution that's gonna create a code violation fee schedule. So ordinance number 5078 adds Chapter 2.50 to the McMinnville City Code. Ordinance number 5079 adds Chapter 8.10 and then does a lot of cleanup. And then Resolution number 2019-54 establishes code violation fees and adds them to the McMinnville fee schedule. So just to talk a little bit about the value of code compliance again, code compliance is really sort of the last piece to achieving our community vision, our goals and vision. We put together the plans, we put together a code to enact the plans, and then we need to ensure that the code is actually abided by. And so that's where code compliance comes into place, and it's really what gets us into a community. We talked to you about a year ago about how we're gonna set up a program where people could easily contact into code enforcement. So Nick and Claudia, and I'm sorry, I shouldn't introduce them, Nick Miles and Claudia Martinez are code compliance officers. They put together an online complaint form. We also have a dedicated phone line for people to call in with complaints, and that's a means of Nick and Claudia getting complaints from the community. And then they're also very active in the community, and they have their own dedicated cell phones that they're handing out as well. The other thing that they've done proactively is they've established subareas in the community and are engaging in those subareas in different ways in terms of community relations with neighborhood associations and then also doing proactive code compliance. This is a snapshot of the cases that they have worked on over the past year to show you the types of nuisances that they're working on as, as they're working through the caseload. And then a snapshot of cases in terms of numbers. So overall, there's been about five, a little over 550 cases, and of that, they've closed 450 and about have about 100 that are active today. So in June, we started this effort when we transferred the code compliance program from the police department to the planning department. And at that time, we made that decision to do that so that we could save resources in terms of the planning wasn't, didn't have the staff capacity to do code compliance for planning and building. And the police department was in a situation where they could restructure and pass the code compliance program onto planning. By bringing it into planning, we were able to serve planning and building needs as well as the rest of the community and look at it from a community relations perspective and look at efficiencies. We, at that time, said we're gonna take it out of the court system and make it an administrative program. That was our goal, to create more efficiencies and timeliness for the community right now. A tool in the toolbox, a final tool in the toolbox to get to abatement is citing someone into court and going through that process, which means that the officer has to be there, the judge is there, our city attorney's office is there. There's a, there's a whole bevy of people who need to be there to sort of follow that case through the court process. And if we brought it into administrative program, we could make it much more streamlined and efficient for everyone. The goal is voluntary compliance, though, and so we do that with education, with information, with communication, and with relationships, and Nick and Claudia do that really, really well. There will be times where we won't achieve voluntary compliance, and that's when we need some tools to achieve it. And so those are the code violation fees, so writing administrative citations or abatement where the city does go in and abate the nuisance and then goes for full cost recovery and collections and liens if necessary. So we said we would evaluate the codes, the current McMinnville Municipal Code for nuisances and code compliance issues, that we would amend it to create this administrative code compliance process, that we create a centralized program in the development, planning, planning department, and then develop a community relations program. In February of this year, we brought to you proposed code amendments. At that time, counselors asked us some questions about the nuisance code relative to Bs, which is a little awkward because what it, what it does is it says Bee colonies are allowed in McMinnville, but under these circumstances, and then it spells out how they're allowed. And then if you're not following those, that particular structure, then it's a nuisance, a public nuisance. At that time, after reviewing it, and then we also had a question about construction debris and how to sort of put that into objective standards so that we could enforce it. After receiving those comments from council, we got the direction to move forward. We did have department head review, and then it went into legal review. And once it went into legal review, David restructured it because he, he's working on a comprehensive program in terms of how he wants the McMinnville Municipal Code to serve the community in the future and felt that this was a good foundation for putting that together. So that's why you see the additional Chapter 2.5, which will serve the whole city and all of its programs in terms of enforcement process, and then the nuisance code. So they've been separated out that way. So the structure of the code, it's, the intent is to simplify it, to aggregate the nuisances in one place. You'll see a lot of deletions that are part of the recommended ordinance as well, so that we can bring things together. They're in several different chapters right now. To have the standardized abatement process, we have a process prescribed for many different nuisances rather than just a standard process. And then to allow for the code compliance officers to issue citations. We reviewed the existing code, we modernized it. I shared with you in February that there's code language in there from the 50s and the 40s. We researched best practices. So Nick and Claudia have been really building a network amongst other Oregon code enforcement personnel, attending training both on state level and national level and reaching out for best practices. We met with the judge of the court to talk about what's working, what's not working in the court system, and then how to have a relationship moving forward, because there's still an opportunity to go into a court system that's a process allowed for somebody who's in the abatement process if they want to appeal after they get past a certain level. They can go into a civil appeal. So we wanted to make sure that we were putting the evidentiary file in place in such a way that it could serve that process if we needed to defend the city appropriately. So we met with the judge to talk about that and also about administrative warrants so that we could do the abatement. We amended the code for objectivity, so how do we get to a place where we can say, this is a nuisance, it's not a nuisance? An example of that is we get a lot of complaints about barking dogs. And Claudia and Nick have to, you know, go through a process right now of sort of deciding, is it at the level that it's a nuisance or not? And there's no sort of performance metrics in the code, so it's somewhat discretionary. And the proposed amendments, you'll see that there is actually a performance metric of 10 minutes if the dog, if your dogs are outside barking for 10 minutes and someone complains, and that's a means of saying there's evidence that it is a nuisance. And then it had the legal review. So in terms of process, just really quickly, Chapter 2.50, the added chapter for process, is all about compliance in a timely manner. We've had some code compliance cases go through the court system over a three-year period until we got to a place of abatement. We're really looking at a 21-day test. So we're trying to set up a program that has a 21-day compliance period associated with it. The first 10 days is voluntary compliance, so Nick and Claudia will communicate with the property owner, let them know that we've received a complaint, and give them the opportunity to bring the property into compliance. Or we also have written into the process that they can call and say, you know, I can't do it in 10 days, but this is how I can do it, and my contractor can't come until, you know, this date or whatever it is. But at least Nick and Claudia know they're moving forward and achieving milestones, and they can put them into a compliance plan. If there isn't voluntary compliance within 10 days, then Nick and Claudia have the opportunity to say, you really need to do this, and they can move into a citation process. So we've given you 10 days to do it, you've shown that you're not willing to do it, and then they can start writing the citations to sort of put a little more oomph behind there to try and get it done in the next 10 days. And then by day 21, if it's not done, they can go in and abate it themselves, use vendors to go in and abate the property, and then we'll go into a full cost recovery process. By city abating, it's much more expensive for the property owner because we will add on our administrative costs associated with handling that abatement, and then it could also go into a lien process against the property. So typically, we don't, I've been working in code enforcement for about 15 years. You don't see a lot of properties go into an abatement process that the city does, but it is a tool that many cities use. Chapter 8.10, the nuisance chapter, what we did there outside of streamlining it, making it more user-friendly, you'll see it's alphabetized. We brought fence codes, which we had in three different portions of the McMinnville Municipal Code into this one place in the nuisance chapter. We consolidate all the animal codes. We had animal codes throughout the, the city code in different chapters, and we brought it all into this one. We added metrics to the unnecessary noise section of the code. We added a section in there on parking and storage of vehicles in front yards and side yards. So right now, we're getting a lot of complaints about vehicles being the front yard, the grass-seated front yard being used as a driveway or a parking lot for different properties. And so we did add a section in there which says, you know, you can expand your driveway section, there is a way to do it, and this is how you do it. It's not your whole front yard, though. And so that's new for McMinnville. We added a section on trash recycling and yard debris containers based on a request from recology. And then just recently, the last couple of weeks, we added a section on graffiti because of there's been an increased amount of graffiti nuisances in this community, and we're getting a lot of complaints about them, and we felt we needed to put it into a nuisance process, which is a typical process for many communities. There are two amendments I'd like to bring to your attention tonight. So there's been a lot of restructuring in this code, and in the last couple of days, we have found two amendments that we'd like to bring to your attention in Section 8.10.260E. So this is under noise, and it's under prohibition, so meaning that these elements are not, do not have to abide by the noise nuisance code. What we want to do is currently, it reads, activities occurring within the scope of any permit issued by the city under the provisions of the McMinnville City Code. We issue a lot of building permits, which we actually don't want to be exempted. They do have to fall under a certain timeframe for the noise provisions. And so we are suggesting a added language that says exempting a use from this section of the McMinnville City Code. So activities occurring within the scope of any permit exempting a use. And that would be when someone comes to city council, which I, we've seen a couple of times where they want to have a large event to 10:00 PM, and you issue that permit specifically for that. The second thing we want to do is, and actually I was just visiting with Mike about this before he left, is our construction vehicles, our street sweepers and some other construction vehicles that are used in public works may exceed the noise decibel level that we're putting in there. So that's the performance metric that we put into the noise so we can have the objectivity. They, the street sweeper will exceed that, so he wanted to make sure that he's not falling out of compliance. And then there are times when, per the city manager or the designee, that we are doing construction in the public right-of-way after hours, or we're sweeping downtown after hours. And so currently, there's a limitation in terms of the exemption in terms of timeframe. What I'd like to do, after, I had originally recommended that we reverse the time and say between 8:00 PM and 7:00 AM. I think what I would like to recommend to you tonight is that number three, just read the prohibition is, meaning that it's exempt from the nuisance code for noise. Vehicles performing repairs or upgrades in the right-of-way, including but not limited to street sweeping, sewer cleaning, construction and maintenance activities occurring authorized by the city manager or designee. So get rid of the hours altogether. And what that means is the city manager has said, either you can work after hours in the right-of-way, or I've given the authority that the street sweeper that exceeds the noise decibel level can operate in the right-of-way. So I'm sorry for the confusion on that, but we wanted to make sure our equipment could continue to serve the community.
Yeah, I think we received an email, I think all the counselors, that someone thought that construction could now go until 8:00 PM. If I read that correctly, I don't know if you guys saw that, that came in this afternoon, but there was a concern that why would we allow construction?
Well, it can go to, right? Yeah. So currently in the code, it can go to 8:00 PM today. Now, before the amendment, actually, there's conflicting pieces of the code in terms of that. We have it in two different places. So what we're recommending is that we bring it to one place here, and that it is 8:00 PM. That is what's in the code today. So we're not changing that, we're just consolidating.
What's the 6:00 PM code that they cited that's currently in there? Was that miscited?
That's the conflicting code, so is it... So we're not changing that, we're just consolidating.
What's the 6:00 PM code that they cited that's currently in there? Was that miscited?
That's the conflicting code, so, and is it six or seven? I thought it was seven.
I think it's seven.
There was an hour difference. There was a code passed earlier in the 60s that was 7:00 PM, and then there was another code passed in the 70s, 70s, is that right? That was, that's 8:00 PM. And we had someone come in and complain about it. David did a legal review. He felt that based on the most recent code, that it superseded the previous code, that so 8:00 PM was the timeframe in which we were operating, and have historically operated for the last three decades, four or five decades. And so we just wanted to clean all that up.
And what's best practices in, as far as statewide as other cities? Are they typically 8:00 PM or 7:00 PM, or no weekends, no holidays?
Do you guys have, I don't know.
No.
I know in Redmond, we let them go later than 8:00 PM, because we were working within a window of constructibility seasons and daylight, right? And so I think that's relative to each community. But the same is actually true here in many regards, rainy season versus dry season, and you'll see a lot of contractors trying to get the work done during the daylight hours of the dry season, the exterior work. The code violation fee, so this is new for McMinnville. We haven't done this in the past. This is, did you have a question about the exemptions?
Well, I just had, I had a couple of comments, and I can wait till the end of your presentation.
Okay, this is, I'm almost there.
Okay.
So this is new for McMinnville. This is, this is a tool in the toolbox. So bringing it into, we no longer are using the threat of citing into court, because that's not efficient. And so this is a tool in the toolbox for Nick and Claudia to use to gain compliance by having this fee structure. This is fairly typical. And what we wanted to do is have a broad range. So this will be used for many other aspects of the city code in terms of gaining compliance. Most of the nuisance codes have a violation of about $250. The most exorbitant one is $1,000. And it's really relative to public safety and hazards, in terms of trying to gain more immediate compliance. And that will be part of the fee schedule, not part of the code, so we can change it by resolution if we need to do so. And then it also dovetails with the civil violations as well. And that is, concludes our presentation.
Thank you, Heather. Questions for the team?
I had a couple. I mean, first, really great job on putting all of that together. And how much of that was substantially rewritten from what you had previously? Was it a lot of?
So I will say, David's the one who rewrote it. I rewrote, was originally in the code and brought best practices together. That's what we brought to you in February. David then took my simpleton language and rewrote it into legalese. There's a lot of SAT words in there that we were like, huh! But, so David rewrote it from what you saw in February.
So the two takeaways that I had, the first is that having just constructed a fence at my house earlier this year, I appreciate the greater flexibility in terms of the three-foot height restriction. You make it, you can go a little more flexible if there's a good line of sight. I think that is a good.
And that's been a practice. So in the last six months, we've been practicing that, because we've gotten, with the transient population issue in this community, we've had a lot of people who have been anxious about safety issues with their properties, and so we've been working through that.
Well, for my issue, it was that our dogs can jump a three-foot fence.
Yeah, and we heard that a lot, too.
Slightly higher fence, so. And then the second question that I had is, you have a, there's, we have in the city code restrictions on leafleting, commercial leafleting of cars and residences. And I question whether that's actually a lawful restriction. Did David do any analysis on whether or not that's actually legal to restrict that type of speech?
So it shouldn't be the speech. It should be, just like signs, it should be the method of distribution of the information.
Right. But leafleting on cars, at least for political purposes, is protected speech, and I suspect that there might be similar protections for commercial speech. I'm skeptical about whether or not that's enforceable.
I can ask him about that. I'm pretty sure, we had the same, we had the same code in Redmond and practiced it there. But we can bring that concern to him. It's for any vehicle that's parked in the public right-of-way.
If you could, if you could check with him on that, because I'm not sure if that's, I'd like to hear.
Yeah, we'd all like to know on that one.
But otherwise, I thought it was great.
It could be the political, actually, I honestly don't know. I'll ask him.
Thanks. Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Go ahead, Zach.
Okay. Good work, thank you. I like the 21-day program. It's effective, and hopefully it leads to you guys getting people to comply. I have a question, if you could describe for me the, what you outlined in 2.50.120, the notice of code violation to be posted on the premises. Can you tell me that process a little bit more? What does that look like?
So what we are planning, once it passes, so right now, we're receiving the complaints. We go and speak with the resident or whoever the property belongs to. If that doesn't work, then we send an official notice, and then we send out a certified letter if they don't come into compliance within 10 days. Posting the property would be either door hangers or something that would stick on the door that would be considered posting. And I think that would be more effective for vacant properties.
So it's in lieu of sending a letter, or you do all of those things?
No, we would, it would pretty much, it would depend on what we think would be best. But what we will do first is speak with the resident. If we're unable to get in contact with them, then we send a letter. And this will allow us to send a letter or post it, especially, like I said, when there's vacant properties, we would be able to post it. But we would do or, one or the other.
Or, I'm going to actually interject. We could do both. So it's building the evidentiary file. This is part of building the evidentiary file. And there are property owners, we have to notify the property owner legally. That's who we'll be leaning if we go into abatement process, and we collect, and we don't receive funds. So they have to be notified of the nuisance and the ability to bait it themselves. There are times when the property owner, one, either is not receiving their mail or refuses to acknowledge they received their mail, or if they get a certified letter, or they have to sign for it, and they refuse to sign for it. So then there's, they can come into the system and say, I never received notice. By posting the property with either a sign or a door hanger, that will be demonstrative of providing notice that they should have seen. It stands up in the court system as evidence of notice.
So at what point in the process, if you receive, if they refuse to acknowledge they received, then do you public notice, or do you post notice?
So my suggestion is, when we get to the 10 days and we do the certified letter, that we would also post the property if we haven't already done so.
Okay. Excellent. And then another question, is it, am I reading that right? That you guys will make a recommendation on the class of violation, and that comes to council for approval and assignment? Or how does, did I read that right or wrong?
No. So the code right now has the class of violation relative to the civil violation fee schedule. The code itself already has that in there. So in the, in the 2.50 process, which is meant to serve all programs in the city, right now you have chapter eight, which is the public nuisance code coming to you for adoption. That will be your decision, right? Written into that code is exactly what code violation that each nuisance is. And for instance, for future code amendments as we go into code enforcement, so the development code, we're going to go through the development code, chapter 17, and review it and identify violation fee penalties in there, too. And we'll bring that back to you as amendments, so that's your decision as a city council, if you adopt that, that you're going to say, if there's a dangerous sign that's a hazard to public safety and it's out of code compliance, maybe that's the 2,500 code violation, right? We assign that in the code. So your vote and action to adopt the code is your decision-making process for that. And I think David's setting that up, so we can do that in other aspects of the code as well. Did that answer it?
Yes. Yeah. And then 8.10, 8.10.260, noise, and then subsection C. Is there a time limit? You talk about decibels. Is there a time limit also for the decibels, or is it just merely the achievement or exceeding of any of those decibel levels? Is it violation, or is it subject?
Some of them have time limits, so like the barking dog issue, and some of them are exceeding the decibel level.
Okay. Okay, those are my questions.
Oh, yeah. Actually, I have a follow-up question to the decibel question. What is the, can you describe, I know that we talked about this when there was, we had a drive-through that was coming in near the West Hills community, and there was a lot of conversation about how the decibels are measured and how you provide evidence of that. In a case where you get a nuisance complaint, how do you then, what's the method for determining if that level of decibel has been exceeded?
So we will have to outfit both Nick and Claudia with a tool for measuring decibels. There are actually tools that you can download onto your telephone software, or you could have a separate tool as well. They will use that as evidence. So it's written into the code, you have to be standing a certain amount of feet away, you then measure the noise. If it, if the, it exceeds a decibel level, you can screenshot that or whatever it is.
Okay. The individual could with, have that same thing and screenshot?
Yeah, so if they, you guys. So if I'm a neighbor and I'm complaining about something, typically what happens is a neighbor, somebody will complain. We find it's a lot of neighbor-on-neighbor issues. But somebody will complain about a code violation, and then it's our job, one, to investigate it. So the first thing is investigation and evidence gathering to see if it actually is a code violation. And then if it is deemed a code violation, then we go into the process of notification and abatement.
Okay.
So somebody can, you know, measure it themselves and send that to us. The question would be, and this might be something for us to follow up with David on, is I've always had our officers go out and if, if somehow affirm that that screenshot actually worked for that time, or try to find a way to find out if it's a reoccurring event, that they can get that.
Yeah, okay. And then the only other question I had was, what kind of feedback have you been getting from the community? You guys have already been, had more focus than we have had in the past. Have you been getting specific feedback from the community about their response to that? Like positive or, or like constructive criticism with regards to how they're responding?
To noise specifically, or?
No, to code compliance specifically, just any code compliance. Are you getting pushback from people?
There's been a lot of educating going on, for sure. It's a lot of, you know, Claudia and I are going out, we're trying really hard to make our first contact with folks to be in person, so that we can share the code with them and treat them as though they didn't know that it was a violation. And I think that's been really effective. A lot of people were unaware that these codes even exist. So we've been focusing a lot on that in the last 12 months. I think the word has spread pretty quickly. It's snowballed, so I think people are starting to share with their neighbors what they can and can't be doing and what they've learned. So it feels like it's spread pretty organically and has been well-received.
Nice.
And people are grateful to have someone to, you know, come out and take care of it.
Yeah, awesome. Okay, thank you. Good job, you guys.
Thanks, Wendy. Any comments down, Adam?
Yeah, I have a few. I guess we'll start with the noise. So it says after 8:00 PM, like leaf blowers can't be used, so technically, a resident couldn't mow his yard after 8:00 PM. Am I reading that correctly? And then, "Storage of motor vehicles," it says, "non-erodible surfaces," but only mentions asphalt, concrete, and pavers. So somebody couldn't use like 3/4-inch minus to provide parking space for their vehicles? Is that correct?
Yeah, so what we have, it shouldn't be exclusive. Which number is the, that you're reading from for that?
That was 8.10.250.
Okay. That is probably for the front yard piece, right? For the purposes of the section?
Yeah, I think it's number C.
Oh, yeah, there we go. It's D.
Yeah.
So consisting of, okay. So non-erodible. So what we're trying to do is, in old codes, like our zoning code right now, we describe what you can and cannot do. But it doesn't allow for evolution of anything, so if it's not on the list, it's not on the list. So what we're trying to do moving forward is put intentional statements in there, so if someone can come in and show it's a non-erodible surface, fine with that.
230 talks about weeds and vegetation. And if it's over 10 inches at any point of the year, I mean, so that would include like somebody that lets their garden overgrow in the winter, and then they prep it in the spring, so they have over 10-inch weeds, they could be fined 250 per day?
Or they can take care of it. So the first 10 days is you get notice and you take care of it. The other thing to remember, it's if it's view, if it's one, you can view it from the public right-of-way, or your neighbor complains about you.
Okay.
We're not entering people's backyards to inspect their backyards.
Okay. How I read it was if there's, if it's not gated, or the gate's not locked, that you guys could legally enter the backyard. That's how I read the code. That's not correct.
Uh-uh.
Um, I was just interpretation.
And it's not practiced that way, either.
Well, I'm well aware of that with current staff, but when you're enacting policy, you need to consider all factors. Escavations in open pits, so that was a hole deeper than three feet or a top width of more than 12 inches. So if a contractor's prepping, or somebody's prepping their landscape for some mature trees, I mean, you could easily get a root ball that's outside of that, and that's technically a violation if it's not filled in within 10 days, and they would be fined.
Yeah. Yeah. And the intent of that is, that's actually, it's a safety hazard. That's a pretty common one in most codes. It's, that's actually a model code language.
140 attractive nuisances. Also another safety one, the way I interpreted it, but it just seems very vague in how it's Like number four, containers accessible to children that are more than one cubic foot that has a door lid that locks or fastens when closed, that cannot be easily opened. In my eyes, I would see a 90-gallon recycling cart that has a wind lock on it that you can't get open from the inside. Is that, so somebody, or something of that nature. I mean, somebody could easily get that fined racked up if we didn't have great code compliance officers like we do currently.
Yeah, so for instance, your example, a child, so again, it's sort of the evidence of the nuisance, right? So if the recycling container is locked, then the child can't access it and get in it. If the recycling container is not locked, so typically, this is like refrigerators that are outside and freezers and things of that nature. So if I can get into it, but I can't get out of it, that's the issue.
I think that was it for my notes.
Sal or Kelly?
Nope, I'm good, thanks.
Good job, you guys. Again, a lot of hard work on everyone's part. So I think we are now to a point where I'll ask for a motion, pass ordinance number 5078 to a second reading. No moved.
Second.
So we have Zach and Wendy. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. Ordinance number 5078 passes on its first reading unanimously. I'll ask the city recorder to read the ordinance by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5078, and ordinance amending title two of the McMinnville Municipal Code, creating chapter 2.50, establishing a civil code enforcement process.
Thank you, Melissa. I'll ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5078.
Some of.
And a second?
Second.
Been moved by Kelly and seconded by Zach. I'll ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Councilor Garvin?
Nay.
Councilor Gary?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Councilor? Councilor Stossens?
Aye.
Council President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5078 is adopted by a vote of four to one. Thank you. First reading will consider the matter of ordinance number 5079. Does any councilor object to having this ordinance read by title only? Hearing none, will the city recorder please read the ordinance into the record?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5079 and ordinance amending titles 8, 9, and 17 of the McMinnville Municipal Code relating to public nuisances.
Thank you. Heather, would you present?
Oh, that's this, that's Chapter 8, the public nuisances. I can present again, but I'm trying to save time.
We're just doing each section. I just follow script. Any, any questions about the nuisance portion? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion. Well, let me back up. No, I'll ask for a motion to pass ordinance number 5079 to a second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by Zach and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, indicate by saying nay. That passes unanimously. Ordinance number 5079 passes by a vote of, excuse me. Ordinance number 5079 passes on the first reading unanimously. I will ask the city recorder to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5079 and ordinance amending titles 8, 9, and 17 of the McMinnville Municipal Code relating to public nuisances.
Thank you, Melissa. Ask for a motion to adopt number, ordinance number 5079.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Been moved by Zach and seconded by Wendy. Ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Councilor Garvin?
Nay.
Councilor Gary?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Councilor Stossens?
Aye.
Council President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5079 is adopted by a vote of four to one. Considering Resolution Number 2019-54, Resolution Adopting a Code Violation Civil Penalty Schedule. We've had a discussion. Any further questions on that? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve Resolution 2019-53.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
It been, it's been moved by Kelly and seconded by Wendy. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, please signify. Okay. Resolution Number 2019-54 passes unanimously or is adopted unanimously by a vote of five to zero. First reading with possible second on ordinance 58, 50, 5080. Does any councilor consider the matter or does any councilor object to reading this ordinance by title only? If not, will the city recorder please read this ordinance into the record?
This is the first reading of ordinance number 5080 and ordinance amending the McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 5.10, provisions related to the local transient lodging tax.
Thank you, Melissa. Marcia, if you would present?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and councilors. I would direct you to the staff report that's in your packet. This action in front of you tonight is to consider ordinance number 5080, which amends sections of Chapter 5.10 of the McMinnville Municipal Code. This is the chapter for local transient lodging tax. The amendments that are in this ordinance, 5080, that are in front of you tonight are intended to reflect recent legislative changes relating to the collection of transient lodging taxes and to ensure that online companies and hosting platforms are properly collecting and remitting that tax to the city. As you know, there's more and more people who are renting their homes out as vacation home rentals or short-term rentals. As a matter of fact, we actually have 64 vacation home rentals registered in the city right now. And many of the people who are renting their homes are, are using online companies such as Airbnb or VRBO, and there are many others. So also, as you probably know, when you, a guest might rent a property through Airbnb, they make the payment directly to the online company and not to the owner of the property, not to the lodging provider. So that makes it more difficult and more complicated for the city to be able to ensure that we're collecting the proper tax on those rentals. So to address that, back in 2013, the Oregon Legislature passed House Bill 2656. And that added the term transient lodging intermediary to ORS 320.300. So the terminology transient lodging intermediary was added to the law to specifically address online travel companies who were collecting the tax from the guest. And so as a result of this, House Bill 2656 and the addition of the language transient lodging intermediary, we did begin actually receiving transient lodging taxes from, right now we're getting transient lodging taxes from nine of these intermediaries. And that includes VRBO, hotels.com, Hotwire, Priceline. So at that time, we did actually start to receive transient lodging tax from, from many of those companies. However, there were some companies that argued that they were not transient lodging intermediaries or tax collectors because they only facilitated the transaction between the guest and the lodging provider or the property owner. They said that because they were not a transient lodging intermediary, did not meet that definition, they were not required to collect the tax and turn it over to the, the government, either the state or the, the local government. So to really try to address this issue of the companies that were arguing that they were not transient lodging intermediaries, the League of Oregon Cities has provided a model ordinance for transient lodging taxes. And they recommend that there is specific language in the local government's ordinance that comes from the House Bill 4120. And if you look at the staff report in the discussion section at the top of the second page, that language that the LOC is recommending is included in ordinance 5080. That language is, states that transient lodging intermediaries charge for occupancy of the transient lodging, collect the consideration charged for occupancy of the transient lodging, receive a fee or commission, and require the transient lodging provider to use a specified third-party entity to collect the consideration charged for the occupancy. So again, ordinance 5080 includes that specific language and would amend our Chapter 5.10 to include that language. There are some other changes that you'll see in this ordinance. And our city attorney had actually taken advantage of this change that we were making and gone through the entire ordinance and had better aligned it with the model policy that the LOC has given us and has, it really better reflects the recent legislative changes and best practices. I would also say that I have been in contact with a number of different finance directors and, and LOC specifically referred to the City of Carbalis that has this language in their ordinance and that they actually have been successful in collecting this tax from a company that has not been willing to do that in the past. And then in Chapter 5.10, .190 penalty, which is at the very end of the ordinance, you'll see that one of the changes is about the penalty for not complying with the ordinance. Lodging providers or tax collectors that have violated the provision of the chapter may be assessed a civil penalty pursuant to Chapter 2.50, which is what Heather was just referring to. I believe there is one change to the ordinance that's in front of you tonight that is different than the ordinance that was in the packet that you received. This is Section 5.10, .010, .G. That's in the definition section of the ordinance. And this is the definition of occupant. And we had changed the definition to say that the occupant means any individual who exercises occupancy, et cetera. However, as Counselor Peralta suggested to us, that by using the word individual, that was actually fairly narrowly, a fairly narrow term, because if you look below in Section M, which describes person, that person is very, that definition of person is very broad and all-inclusive. So we would like our definition of occupant to mean any person instead of any individual. So that's the reason for that one word change in this ordinance that's in front of you tonight. Are there any questions on that?
Any questions for Marcia? Hearing none. I will ask for a motion to pass ordinance 5080 to a second reading.
So moved. Second.
It's been.
As amended.
As amended. Go ahead.
No, as, you need to add that.
As amended. We have the.
Oh, as amended, okay. It's been moved by Zach and it was seconded by Adam?
So.
Or Sal. Those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by saying nay. Ordinance number 5080 passes on its first reading unanimously. I will now ask the city recorder to read the ordinance again by title only.
This is the second reading of ordinance number 5080 and ordinance amending the McMinnville Municipal Code, Chapter 5.10, provisions related to the local transient lodging tax.
Thank you, Melissa. I will ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number 5080.
So moved.
And it's been moved by Adam and seconded by Sal. I'll ask the city recorder to poll the council.
Councilor Garvin?
Aye.
Councilor Gary?
Aye.
Councilor Peralta?
Aye.
Councilor Stossens?
Aye.
Council President Minkie?
Aye.
Ordinance number 5080 is adopted by a vote of five to zero. That takes us to the end conclusion of our meeting this evening. Any other items? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
So the reason that I asked for that change is the way they drafted it.
Oh, yeah. We did.
We did. It wasn't a provider under the definition.